Alright, it's now officially 6:30 so we can start our meeting. And we appreciate all who are here today. We have a little more crowded chambers than normal and it's heartwarming to see, and for good reason as you'll hear. Our roll call today, it shows all members of the council are present, and our opening ceremony today is by Councilmember Steve Beulah. Councilmember?
Thank you Mayor, and welcome to all who are here today, especially those youth who are here to receive the Mayor's Star of Excellence Award. And I want to commend you on being some of West Valley City's best and brightest students, and also, I want you to realize the importance of being invited here and this opportunity. Think about how many youth in our nation are being honored by their hometown meridianite. It's not very many. We looked last week or the week before, some young people who are in a television competition show you might have heard of, American Idol, went to their hometowns and were honored. And we think you're every bit as important, if not more important, in your accomplishments, you're every bit as important in your education, and probably will be as beneficial for the rest of your life as the accomplishments of those kids. This is also a payday for your parents. Your parents love you and worry about you and hope that you'll do well. I think every good parent hopes that his or her children will do actually better than they did. And I congratulate your parents as well, and thank you for bringing parents and people that are important to you. When I was your age, one of the most popular music albums of the time was an album called "The Wall" by Pink Floyd. Very good album. And one of the hits from that album included the phrase repeated over and over again, "We don't need no education." And that was a song we sang along to all the time. There are some other thoughts however on education, I want to share some of those with you. Mahatma Gandhi said, "Live as if you were to die tomorrow, learn as if you were to live forever." Oscar Wilde said, "You can never be overdressed or overeducated." While the Cronkite said, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." And Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." So I commend you on being educated, and since you are smart and educated, you know that when Pink Floyd said, "We don't need no education," that was a double negative, and it means we do need an education. And so again, congratulations. And just to celebrate that, I've asked that we listen to a little music celebrating this time of year, that you've accomplished this education and you're ready for the summer. Mr. Aslanian? Thank you. They don't always let me play rock and roll here, but I wanted to celebrate another successful year of school behind you, and congratulations on being here.
Thank you Councilman Beulah, but I must say I'm so disappointed. I was hoping you'd stand on the dais and play air guitar, but maybe next year.
I thought I'd bring you some drums playing along, but I didn't.
Okay, well it's an exciting time of year, especially for our students. We have some scout groups with us today, and we recognize them when they're here, and we ask that the senior boy leader from each group come up and introduce their group. Let's see, on the front row group, who would represent that troop? Okay, just tell us your name and your troop number, and what school you live by, and what badge you're working on tonight, please.
I'm Parker Jones from Troop 1034. We live by the Orchard Elementary, and we're working on the citizenship and the community mayor badge.
Great, thank you Parker, and welcome to Troop 1034. See, is there a different scout troop as well, or are you all part of the same one? Are you with his? Okay. Another scout group over here, maybe?
Same group.
The same group. What a good, a good full group on a full night here at City Council, so welcome to our scouts. Council on item number five tonight, we have the minutes of May 8th for our consideration. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion there?
I'm with approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 8th.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of May 8th, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Now we have a couple special presentations and awards tonight, and the first is from representatives of Target. This will be making a special presentation. Let's see, Mr. Pyle, who's leading that up for us?
Thank you Mayor. We're actually gonna have those approached along with our National Night Out mascot, and Lieutenant Allen Taylor I believe, as they're coming up here. But as they're coming up, I just want to thank them. We're really very happy to have Target as a new corporate citizen here in the city, and we sure appreciate their efforts and their participation in our community endeavors that we have going on. So thanks very much for being here.
Absolutely, thank you for having us. So just a little bit about myself, you guys are probably gonna be seeing me or speaking to me. My name is Colleen Degro, originally from Southern California. I've been in Utah two awesome years, and I've been with Target the entire time. Target's dedication to communities is phenomenal, and you guys learn that over the course of our endeavors in West Valley. But my role in the new West Valley store is gonna be executive team over assets protection, so I have a very strong partnership with the police. And I just want to tell you a little bit about Target's, their commitment to the communities. Since 1946, Target has committed to donating 5% of their income to the communities, which is more than $3 million a week. In 2010 alone, team members of Target have volunteered more than 430,000 hours to their communities. About two decades ago, Target in Blue was created as a program to strengthen the partnerships and the engagement within the community to make it a more safe place. We found that our resources, such as our investigation centers and forensic labs, could help the law enforcement not only with cases regarding Target, but other cases completely unrelated to our company. Our philosophy is that we don't want to be in the community, we want to be a part of it. As this philosophy, we're proud to be the sponsor of the National Night Out campaign. And as a part of this, in 2012, we're excited to present a grant to the West Valley City for $500 towards that campaign alone. We have several grants that go throughout the year, so you'll probably be seeing me on more occasions. But we're really excited because 15,000 communities participated in National Night Out last year, so we're looking forward to strengthening our partnerships in the future and in 2012.
Now for the photo ops. We appreciate Target, we're excited for the new Target store on 5600 West to be opening up July...
29th.
29th, Leuhus County. And we welcome you Colleen, and appreciate the partnership with the community. And anyone else in the audience, if they'd like to bring a $500 check and present it to our Neighborhood Services is always welcome, and we'll gladly make time for that on the agenda anytime. So we appreciate that partnership, and we do have a great Police Department and Neighborhood Services group that really wins awards nationally for the Night Out Against Crime events, which many of you are probably a part of, those block parties we have in August. So a terrific effort, and we hope to continue to grow this year. Our next presentation, and I'm really excited about this, this is as Councilmember Beulah discussed briefly in his opening ceremony, is our annual Mayor's Star of Excellence Award. And this is an award really given not only the Mayor's Star of Excellence, but the Mayor and council, as elected officials. We applaud your efforts, we applaud the young people. You're the future of our city and our larger community and our state and nation. And when you look at all the people in West Valley City, and all the students out there, this group is the top 3%. This is the cream of the crop, as we say in the dairy business. And we really are excited with the efforts that you've gone forward. One of the reasons you're getting this this year is, school might be out for summer, but certainly not forever, and we hope that you have a very productive year next year as you prepare for college. And hopefully that the certificate, there's no money or anything fancy that comes with it, but hopefully it's one more thing on that resume as you look for jobs, as you look for scholarships, as you look forward to college, which hopefully all of you will. And that the world will know that the Mayor and City Council of West Valley City appreciated your efforts, and you really were among the top groups. And it's very rare that you get an award where it's not just your high school, but it's really for the larger community, and this is. We have students tonight represented from Cypress High School, Granger High School, Hunter High School, and Taylorsville High School, and only students that live in West Valley City were eligible for this award. And even though Granger and Hunter are in our city geographically, a sizable population, the Cypress student body actually lives in West Valley, and a sizable population of the Taylorsville student body actually lives in West Valley. So really excited to see all these students and parents and loved ones here tonight. How we do this, just in the sake of efficiency, is I get to be the one to slaughter your names. I mean, read your names, and I may mispronounce some, being called me Mayor Winder afterwards to get back, or just like the telemarketers do. But I'll do the best I can, and each of the council members have certificates. And so I'll tell you who has your certificate, so when I read your name, you know who to come up and get your certificate from. And what we traditionally have done for the four past years that we've done this, or five past years, is once you get your certificate, then wait here just off the side here by the statue and by Carol, our recorder tonight, and then once we get to the last person, we'll invite all of you back in front, and we'll move the mic aside and do a big group picture for our city records, the media, and any proud parents, Facebook pagers, or other things out there, okay? So, these are in no particular order. You're all in the top 3%, but we're gonna do some from Cypress High School first, and this group will go to Councilmember Steve Vincent for their certificates. So the first, and let's hold the applause to the end, because if we clap after everybody, then it really will be a long night, and they're all deserving of applause. So please hold your applause to the end. So Devon Anderson, or Devon Anderson, see I'm mispronouncing already. And by the way, as full as this is, we also realize these are busy students with a lot of extracurricular events, and there may be many who aren't here. That's traditionally the case, but obviously many are here. Caleb Aston, Abigail Christensen, Margarita Goldberg, Lindsay Hall, Samantha Hansen, Matthew Hellworth, Jeffrey Hepler, Miranda Lorenk. So those names I just read, please go to Councilman Vincent for your certificate. And maybe let's clap after each group, because I just can't wait till the end. Thank you. Okay, going to Councilmember Karen Lang, Janil Barney, and these are from Granger High School, this group. Janil Barney, Alyssa Dahl, Jeffrey Fulton, Wyatt Galen, Catherine Ipsen, Deborah Meyerova, Naomi Newton, Rosie Fedote, Marisol Chiles. That group for Councilmember Karen Lang. Let's give them a round of applause. Alright, going to, ah, let's break it down. Coming over to Councilmember Dawn Christensen. These first are from Hunter High School. Mylan Trin, Amy Vandenaker, Jerome Vernon, and then from Taylorsville High School, Austin Anderson, Andy Bayardo, Alexandra Bosniak, Kylie Brown, Brooke Beuler, Rosario Chezum. They come here to Dawn Christensen. Let's applaud that group. Our next group of young scholars comes to Councilmember Steve Beulah here, our rock and roll man. Ryla Coulson, or Ryla Coulson? What? Ryla, yeah. Ryla Coulson. Edgar Estrada, Charlie Holte, Preston Hughes, Daniel Jefferson, Amber Lundgren, Cody Noe, Janiel Schlosser, Miranda Vanderhayden, and Elizabeth Williams. Let's applaud that group. I'm a Taylorsville Warrior, by the way. My alma mater. Alright, let's send the next group here to Corey Rushton. Albert, and this group's from Cypress High School. Alberto Martinez, Erica Miller, Jeffrey Olson, Alex Peterson, Jessica Ramirez, Spencer Reed, Cody Sadler, Nicole Selman, and Kylie Walker. Let's give them a round of applause. Alright, let's go now to Councilmember Tom Hune. And this group is Granger High, the first two. Genus Tomatsafe, Denia Tan, and then from Hunter High, Blake Allred, Skylar Anderson, Amber Arrington, Reed Mackey, Quinn Parker, William Peterson, and Kendall Taylor. Let's give them a round of applause. Let's see, Mr. Conde, if we could move that podium, because we're gonna fit a few students here in a while. By the way, we say top 3%, but they were chosen by a combination of their ACT or SAT scores and their cumulative grade point average. So it really is weighted in a fair way for all the schools, and we really do feel that this is a very bright group that's with us and with a very bright future. Alright, let's invite all the scholars back up, and we'll do a group photo. So everyone come back up front. If you think this is crazy, you should have seen the first year we tried this. Well, we figured it out after a couple years, I think.
Stay there, excuse me. Hey, we getting off? My cheeks hurt.
Thank you students, and because we thank so much of you, and you're well on your way to a bright future, we'll let you leave the meeting early with your families and get on your way to that bright future. Being a public meeting, you're welcome to stay, but you're certainly welcome to go home. Item seven tonight is our comment period, and we didn't have anyone sign up to speak in this evening's comment period. But we do have that available each week if others in the future would like to come address us on the topic of their choice. We come to item eight, which is our resolutions. And our first one is 1269. Mr. Pyle? Oh, you? Oh, there are two people, okay. Let's jump back to item seven, and we did have two people sign up to speak in the comment period. We are working on getting our microphone back. Scouts are known for a good turn daily. Here's one right here. Thank you. A little chaotic there, but in a good way, to have all those great students here. Okay, Mr. Mike Markham has signed up to speak in our comment period. And Mr. Markham, you've been in our chambers before, and welcome.
Probably I'd have my address.
Yep.
There's gonna be some discussion coming up on community standards, because some building that's going on. And Mike, community standards are probably different from Dawn's community standards, or Karen's community standards. We need to raise all of our community standards. There's been an issue that I've talked to all the two of you about in the past. We have a piece of property over here, I believe it's on Lancer Way, just down the road from Harvey Street, this side of Harvey Street. It's kind of a maintained weed patch. See who knows which one I'm talking about. I'm trying to compare it to a community standard property that's about 650 East, about 3900 South. It's also owned by the same organization. The one on the east side of town is maintained very well. I noticed the other day they were putting in raised garden beds for maybe some of the community around there. That might be something we can look at over here. But I think time is up for the rent offense, the weeds. Can somebody do something about it? I don't know whose district it's in. It might be in Tom's. Does anybody know? I don't know the districts. Because we need to work on our community standards. Wayne, our community development people, they can spend all the time in the world building a hotel, making the area right here nice, but we've gotta kind of spread our wings. And that is in an area that, if we get people staying at this hotel that like to get out and run, that's an area that they're gonna be running through. As I travel, a lot of hotels, I don't, but a lot of people stay at these hotels. They get up early to go out and run, they run in the afternoon, whatever. They're gonna stay here and they're gonna run. We want them to run to someplace that's nice. It's kind of irritating with me, that little spot down there, because the same people don't maintain the property so nicely at 650 East. We can maybe get somebody up there to whittle their hair a little bit, or whatever it might take. I know, Mike, you can't say a whole lot because you don't want to ruffle any feathers.
I ruffle plenty of feathers.
But, well, not in this direction. But if we could maybe spend some effort on our community standards, like I say, everybody's is different, but let's raise West Valley's community standards. Let's get people believing West Valley's community standards are greater than some of the other communities around. I've traveled all over this valley kind of looking and to see what goes on. West Valley gets a very bad rap because there's some nasty communities out in some of these other cities. But we need to raise our, raise the bar in West Valley. I think Wayne does a great job working with Lane. I know Lane, trust me, Lane knows me, knows my neighborhood. But I think it's a pretty nice neighborhood. So, let's all work together and raise our community standards. Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Markham, and I believe Mr. Pyle is aware of the property he's referring to. And I think that came up a while back about maybe doing something there, and...
It did, Mayor, and it's been a while since we've had that conversation, so we'll raise the conversation again and see if we get something going.
Thank you. Dave Butters. Good to see you, Dave. And he's written his address for our records, and so you don't need to repeat it for the microphone.
Okay.
And you have up to five minutes.
Okay. Just would like to discuss the intersection of 3500 South and 40th West, particularly northbound. So it's between Harmon's Grocery Store, Harmon's Office Tower, or Office Building, heading north. Two lanes going north, there used to be, before 35th was remodeled and widened and everything, there used to be a right, dedicated right-hand turn. The other lane went straight. Then during the construction, they wanted everyone to go down to 31st and avoid 35th while they were working on it, so they took out the right-hand turn. Now that 35th's done and everyone's using it, they've never turned it back to a dedicated right-hand turn. So what happens is, you'll have one or two cars in the lane that goes straight through. You'll have 15 cars lined up trying to turn right, the one person sitting there that's gonna go straight. And it really becomes a bottleneck in the mornings when everyone's trying to get to work and stuff. It'd be nice if that right-hand lane would be dedicated right-hand turn. In the evenings, it also gets pretty backed up a bit. Most people that go through, that try to go through in that right-hand lane, turn into the Chevron, but if everyone was turning right anyway, it would be a problem getting over. And then once you're through it, it merges back into one lane anyway. So, if someone could just kind of look at that, and I think it would really alleviate a lot of congestion and stuff in that area, particularly when...
Thank you, Mr. Butters. And we have his phone number on that document, Carol?
That's a home. I can give you a cell, too, if you need it out.
And Mr. Pyle, if we could have public boards take a look at that, because it sounds like if it was done for the construction, maybe it's meant to be temporary, and then get back to Mr. Butters?
I got a note right here. We'll do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's good when we have residents helping us be the eyes and ears out there. And sometimes there is methods to madness, reasons why things are the way they are, but plenty of times we look at things and find that, yeah, we really ought to change that to how it was or how it could be. So thank you for coming today. Okay, we now close the comment period. We go to item eight, which is our resolutions. We have three this evening. 1269. Mr. Pyle, if you could introduce that for us, please.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Hold on just a sec here, sorry to delay. Okay, our first contract tonight, our first resolution is for the purpose of awarding a widening project, a traffic project. We've got it going over on 6200 South, and we are proposing to award that contract to Kilgore Contracting. There were 12 bids received. They're the lowest responsible bidder, so we recommend going that way.
Council, any discussion or motion on 1269? Counsel, any discussion or motion on 1269?
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 1269.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, all in favor of approving 1269, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. For the sake of our scouts or other visitors, know that we do meet each Tuesday at 4:30 in the adjacent room for a study meeting, where we go over all the items on the next week's agenda or any other forthcoming things. And so if we move rather quickly, it's not because we like you and wanna let you get home earlier, although we do like you, but it is because we've had previous discussion on everything tonight. Mr. Pyle, 1270, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow us to acquire equipment that'll be necessary in putting together the new golf course out of West Ridge. And it's for $169,530. We have a number of vendors that bid on the process, and we are looking at using a number of them. The whole list isn't going to one contractor, it's going to some different ones.
Thank you. Counsel, any thoughts or motion there on 1270?
I think we need to point out that this money isn't coming out of our general fund. It's out of the golf course reconstruction budget that was set up in agreement with UDOT when they destroyed our golf course.
Sad as it is they destroyed it, we appreciate their finances and helping to rebuild it. It'll really be quite simple.
It'll be even better than it was before.
That's right. Would you like to make that in a motion, sir?
I would move that we approve Resolution 1270.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion to that topic? Okay, all in favor of approving 1270, say aye.
Aye.
That resolution also passes. Final resolution tonight, Mr. Pyle, 1271.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would award a contract to Metro Builders Limited Liability Corporation for the construction of Falcon Crest Park in the amount of $333,000 and some change, which we will fund from park impact fees. There were five bidders on the project, and Metro is the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you very much. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to just take a moment. This has been our park a long time coming, and as Wayne and Kevin will know, I've pushed and prodded it pretty hard. But there's a scout troop here today that's very interested in this, and all those that are here in the neighborhood of Falcon Crest Park, if you'd stand. You've got a lot of workers out there, Kevin, and they wanna roll up their sleeves and they wanna be a part of this construction, and so I would just ask you to at least find some work for them out there, because they really are interested. They spent last month out there cleaning the property for you and cutting some trees down, and they're really anxious to get this park in. So with that, I move for, to pass Resolution 1271.
Second.
We have a motion, a couple seconds, and enthusiastic audience for this project. Any discussion of this motion, counsel? Okay, all in favor of approving Resolution 1271 to award a contract for the construction of Falcon Crest Park and get it on its way, say aye.
Aye.
Even the audience is for it, all right. Carol, that's like more than unanimous, that's like an A+.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, they have a fabulous scout master in Dave sitting over here, and Dave is applying quite a bit of pressure on Kevin as well, so. A great neighborhood.
That's great. Corey, do you?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out also, now that it's unanimous and underway, that we as a city council, I dedicate gratitude to Councilmember Vincent on this, because he really took the lead and represented us as a city council and city interest to help get this going and liaison with the community, and represents his council district very well, and this park is a good token and sign of that, so.
Thank you, Councilman Rush. It's true, we have a lot of priorities and competing interests for our time, attention, and money, and sometimes it takes a good council member like Councilmember Vincent to help rattle us all loose and help push it through, so. Way to go, Steve. And good team effort, and we look forward to seeing what the staff and the contractor and the community can do together for a great Falcon Crest Park. Item nine tonight is an important item of unfinished business that includes an ordinance and a couple resolutions. Mr. Pyle, if you'd like to introduce that application, please.
Thank you, sir. So as you mentioned, this is an item that's been before us, and part of the original application was approved, part of it was denied. The council made formal motion to bring it back for your consideration, and so that is what brings it here this evening. The short explanation of what you are considering is there was original application for a general plan change, which was approved. There was also application for amending the zoning map and also a development agreement, neither of which were approved. Since that time, we've had conversations and worked extensively with the proposed developer, and they're back before you to have both of those items reconsidered. Additionally, there's a development agreement added to that. The circumstances of the project that was changed made that appropriate, and so therefore that's what you have before you tonight for consideration for action, the zoning map change and the two development agreements. Although the public hearing's been closed, Mayor, you do have representatives here from Castlewood and SLR. You certainly are welcome as a council to take comment from them. It wouldn't be in the normal public hearing setting, but if the council requests that, then you can do that.
Thank you. Or the council may have questions or other things to bring up with our desk and staff. Okay, so we take these one at a time. The first one is 1219. Is there any discussion on that item or a motion? Again, questions for either the staff or the applicants?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd make a comment and follow it up with a motion, if I may. You know, when West Valley City Incorporated 30 years ago, I think one of the main driving forces, if not the main driving force, was to have some local planning control over things that were being built in the city. And over that 30 years, we've had some successes and some not-so-good successes, but this, the whole process with Castlewood and SLR going through this and Hiberia, in my mind, has been a real success of our city incorporating. There was some, when we think about just the planning process, sometimes we think that Castlewood and SLR are the consumers of the city's planning process, but really it's the 130,000 residents of the city to make sure that safe and quality projects that meet the city standards come in, and that's the real consumer of our process, or the real beneficiary is the public in general. And I think the public's been suited very well as it's gone through this process. Last month in our meeting, there was a few questions that were raised, and some of them were the loss of the R18, others were the quality of the apartments, and whether it was lifestyle apartments or transient apartments. And the other one was raised by myself, was the appropriateness of far-end senior housing, whether that was appropriate in this area. And the applicant has went back and taken, reviewed some of those questions and concerns, and with that has made some adjustments and some market adjustments, some zoning adjustments to meet that and come into accordance with some of the feedback, as well as the general plan, which we updated that night. And so I'm very pleased with this, and I'm excited to see this continue to blossom as a key component to our city. With that, I would move acceptance of ordinance 1219.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. We have a live motion now for ordinance, approval of ordinance 1219. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Let's see, Councilmember Lane and Vincent.
My comment, I'm still not comfortable with this zone change, and I do not think that the general C2 commercial inside of the neighborhood is appropriate. More a C1 or a neighborhood commercial, to me, would be a lot more appropriate. We have a lot of businesses on 3500, which is a main street, that butts up against residential, so it is a C1 instead of a C2. A more mellow, neighborhood-friendly commercial, and I just don't see that the C2 is appropriate in that area.
Thank you. Councilmember Vincent?
I'll just kind of reiterate my concerns from last time, and you know, my feeling is, is that as the development along 56 West, the commercial went in, that the next piece to that was the high-density residential, which has already been installed, which are the apartment complexes and the townhomes, and then as we moved further to the east, it was to move into single-family homes. I'm not opposed to the high-density, I just think this is the wrong high-density. I think this is the type of high-density that you would build around a transit center, and this is not a transit center. This is more of a suburban area rather than an urban transit center, so I'm not in favor of this, because I just don't think it meets the desired plan for that area.
Okay, are there comments from councilmembers? Questions? Staff would like to add something. Mr. Pyle?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to add, probably the specific item is more addressed in the development agreement, but before you consider any zoning change, you may want to hear or consider that as well. I was asked by SLR and Castlewood if they might present some further information as to the development agreement, specific to the R18 zoning. I told them that from a staff standpoint, they were free to do that if the council wanted to hear from them.
If they had further information from what we've heard before, and I would be interested in hearing it, and also, we know that all these items interact so well, that the development agreement does have a relationship to the zoning. So if there are objections from the council, I'd be more than happy to invite representatives from the applicant to share what additional information they'd like with us.
Mayor, members of the council, we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you again this evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Rasmussen, can you state your name and address just for our recorders?
I can. Dwayne Rasmussen, 67 Porty South, 1300, Salt Lake City, Utah. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you in your reconsideration of this item. There are two things from Castlewood's standpoint that have changed, in addition to some of the things that Councilman Rush have mentioned. One is that I think it was unclear that we were willing to commit to grant a countertops as part of the development agreement, and we are. Secondly, there were some members of the council who had some issues with regard to the number of three bedrooms versus the other product within them, and we have specifically gone back and raised the number of three bedrooms by six and lowered the number of two bedrooms by six, so that the same number still is there. We appreciate the partnership arrangement and respect the position that you're in as a council, and hope that you'll see it within your purview to approve this. We think it's a good use. We're excited about bringing high-quality residents to the community. SLR had some specific comments that they wanted to make with regard to the one in R18 that we're not developing, and here with me this evening is David Cannon, if you wouldn't mind hearing just a quick word from him as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Mr. Cannon? And likewise, sir, if you can state your name and address for our residents.
David Cannon, Suburban Land Reserve, 4271 De Gray Drive, South Jordan, Utah. Mayor and council, thank you very much for your partnership in Lake Park. We filled it together with you and city staff and us as master developer. We've worked to make Lake Park the beautiful, high-quality master development park that it is. I think having target here earlier sort of shows that, that collectively working with city staff and US council, we've helped to bring some great uses to Lake Park. First of all, with specific to the Castlewood application, we're really excited about the Castlewood application. We feel it truly is high-quality residential development in Lake Park. You might be interested to know that in all of our purchase agreements with our buyers in Lake Park, we explicitly state that our development standards are likely to be equal or greater than city standards, and that you abide by our design requirements and guidelines. And we've really worked hard to ensure high-quality development. We would not have allowed Castlewood to put this property under contract and make this application without first satisfying for ourselves that this is a good use for the park. We think it brings people and energy into the heart of Lake Park that can help support the retail, the office park, and all other uses that are in the development. With specific to the application that's before you tonight on the development agreement on our adjacent parcel, also within that triangle area of Lake Park, the proposed development agreement calls for R18 zoning and a minimum of 8,000 square foot lots. We're accepting and open to all of your input and don't want to do anything that's contrary to your views of how the city should develop. We think that we've evidenced that over the years as we've developed a high-quality park. We're comfortable with those parameters. We've talked to two quality builders and know that they can build within that standard. However, I just want to make sure we all understand, there may be reasons why Lake Park, and from your perspective as city council, you may want to consider the further qualifier of 8,000 square foot lots. 8,000 square foot lots is already inherent in R18 zoning. It's already a requirement, so it almost is unnecessary. And that additional requirement precludes this property from developing under a planned unit development process, a PUD. And a PUD may be of interest to you for a couple of reasons. First is in the previous time we heard this application last month, there was a suggestion that you were not interested in age-targeted rental homes, but instead a detached, single-family retirement-oriented community of detached, single-family homes. That kind of development would be allowed in R18 under this PUD in exchange for higher levels of architecture, open space, and amenities. Under the requirement of 8,000 square foot lots, that would preclude that opportunity. Secondly, we've been encouraged by numerous people of the city that they would like to see Lake Park develop more rapidly, that it's taking us a long time. And that is the case with large master planned communities, and because of the deep investment we've made in infrastructure, it's gonna take a while. Having the opportunity for a PUD would allow us to bring a residential product that's highly amenitized, adjacent to water, trails, retail, and a school, that could develop concurrently with the single family. We're currently under contract or close to with Ivory Homes on 35 acres for 108 single-family lots, ranging from 7,500 feet all the way up to well above 10,000 square feet. So we're not delivering apartments in lieu of 8,000 square foot lots, it's in addition to. We're trying to hit every segment of the market to make this a vibrant community. And so those are some of the reasons why we think you may want to consider the 8,000 square foot addition in that development agreement. We'll accept either scenario, but we just want to make you aware of that. Under that PUD, it is explicit in the city code that PUD development requires increased amenities and architecture, and it would be completely up to your review. Either way, we're okay. We appreciate your consideration of both Castlewood and my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. And Mr. Pyle, the PUD question isn't necessarily up for consideration this evening, that would be something that would come down the road, or where in the timeline would a PUD and an R18 come to play?
The rezone, neither the rezone nor the development agreement either preclude or support a PUD designation, so it's really not part of the conversation at all right now. What Mr. Cannon and SLR are proposing by including that is that they could then come back if that was included in the development agreement, or another way to accomplish the same thing would be to remove the R18 requirement out of the development agreement, and then they could come back and propose that if you wanted to consider that sort of an option. My conversation with them was basically centered around, from a staff standpoint, we don't have a problem with that. As I mentioned, this doesn't preclude the PUD designation, but our understanding also from the council's standpoint is they are firm and set on the 8,000 square foot lot requirement in the development agreement. That's why it appears before you the way that it is.
So if we pass it the way it is today, is there any possibility for them to come back with the PUD, or is that now gone if we pass it the way it is?
No, they can still come back with it, but they're correct in that the 8,000 square foot lot designation would probably, for all intents and purposes, make it unworkable. You could still come back and propose that, but it just wouldn't work. My point back to them was, we understand that, we see that, that's why I'm even willing to support letting you have that, or put that proposal before the council. But my understanding of where the council is at was, that's the direction, so that's what's in the development agreement.
And would that be on Resolution 1273?
I believe it's 72, yes. Proposed development agreement includes the following two requirements: develop to single-family detached homes. All lots shall be at least 8,000 square feet in area.
Excuse me, so that was on 1272?
That's correct.
All right, we do have a live ordinance before us, number 1219, which is the rezone. And we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions on ordinance 1219?
I have a comment, just to let you know, we would love to do business with you guys. And I think, the one thing I'm real concerned about is the commercial area, C2, that's And I think, the one thing I'm real concerned about is the commercial area, C2, that you were planning to do because of the number of vacancy on 3100 South and also 5600 West. It's a lot they store there and they move out. And I do wonder if you, how are you going to do to fill your tenant in with the C2 area? So anybody can, yeah, maybe give you the answer, I appreciate that very much.
We think there are a couple of reasons why commercial zoned property makes sense in that location. We understand there are other areas of the city that have retail that needs to be backfilled with a new use or a new user. We think there's some value in the C2 zoning, because part of the vision of Lake Park is creating a true mixed-use environment where people can live, work, and have recreation. One of the pieces of feedback we consistently get on our corporate park side of Lake Park is that we need more retail amenities close, allowing workers, we've got an estimated 5,500 workers in Lake Park, provide close lunch and retail access for them to get away from the office in an hour, get a meal and get back. We think that the retail around Target will have some spillover effects on that parcel. Additionally, the C2 zone allows a number of uses, such as assisted living, healthcare, and so forth. We think there could be some great uses for dental or medical clinics adjacent to the schools and adjacent to population within a walking distance, the whole vision of a mixed-use community where people can live, work, recreate, and get their services all within a walking distance of their home.
Mr. Rasmussen, would you like to add anything to that question?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mayor. Speaking specifically to your question and to Councilwoman Lang's observation as well with regard to the C2, typically we like the relationship between commercial and high-density. It's not as low as a single-family neighborhood right next door, and we like that synergy that is created there, and we like what's happening over with Target Center and Arbor Gardener and what they're doing over there, and think there are some uses that could spill over here. And then, if in fact you approve the R18 tonight, that C2 is completely separated from the single-family neighborhood and the townhome neighborhood by the water. And so I think there are a lot of synergistic uses that can occur there that would really be good for the multifamily as well as tying in with the Target Center immediately across the street. I hope that helps answer your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question from Mr. Powell. Mr. Powell, we heard from Mr. Markham in our public comment about a certain property on Lance Way that's been neglected for years and is an eyesore and an embarrassment to our cities as a son by these same parties.
I'm not sure that SLR actually holds that parcel or not, but I can find that out. I'm not sure who the holding company in charge of the particular parcel is, but I can get that.
I'm seeing heads shaking in the audience that SLR is not involved with that property. Their ownership would be...
Perhaps a parent corporation.
Parent corporation.
Right.
But even that's a separate title.
Sometimes you're tainted by the company that you keep. We'd like all properties owned by that parent corporation to look nice and be developed and be appropriately beautiful for our city. Maybe that word could get back to headquarters.
You know, I wish that the parent company had the same development standards that SLR has, and that may be heresy to say, but I've been so impressed through the years with our partnership with Lake Park. When you talk about when the beautiful parts of our city or neighborhoods of our city, Lake Park and Highbury really are great and have developed well, and the residential's been done in a quality way, and the trails and canals have been built as promised, and the monument markers and roundabouts, and everything's been delivered as promised. So if you talk about a development partner that we has really walked the walk and stepped up for a high-quality standard, SLR has. And so I do appreciate what Mr. Cannon was saying about how sometimes, oftentimes, their standards are even higher than the city's, and we've seen that in the type of quality that they've done there and the partnership they've had with the city. Are there any other comments on 1219? We do have a couple more.
Mayor, just a comment, I don't know how many others have had conversations with Mr. Gust, who is the, be the commercial developer, and he has indicated to me, I mean, to Tom's question, that they have people ready to go and that these spots will not be vacant. They actively have people ready to sign up and be a part of the project, so.
And that's good in a few ways. I mean, it's good that there's not the empty field to maintain, that the neighbors complain about it, and it's good because people are anxious to see a good project move forward.
He's actually with some of our staff in Vegas as we speak, you know, signing up more tenants, so.
So you're talking about 5600 West?
No, we're talking about this property.
Oh, okay.
So even if it's C2, they already have some financial...
Okay, and that'd be good.
Well, I'll tell you, even last, even recently meeting with the Home Two Suites by Hilton folks in there that have the hotel there in Lake Park, they said there's a big pit of demand in there for some more retail restaurants, sorts of things, by both the corporate and residential customers, and this would even help with that. Let's see, this line had, I'm not sure if it's piggybacking or whatever.
Kind of, no, I was just going to say that it's kind of the icing on the cake that the partners are down there working on the C2 zone, but you know, even if they weren't, I still feel that, you know, this is an appropriate use for down there, and it kind of comes back to the discussion we had last time, to with it being a lifestyle choice to where, yeah, everybody's not going to want to live next to a restaurant on the lake or, you know, whatever retail that's on there. But a lot of people in this day and age are that will be in apartments, who will be in a master-planned zone community on there to be able to have that right next to it. You know, I remember years ago going back as part of the West Valley delegation to meet with our senators in Washington DC that had a particular interest in this project, and that was really how we were pushing it, was you can walk out to your house, or you can live in an apartment, then graduate to a house, and then throw your kayak in the lake and go to work at Discover Card, and then come back and have a restaurant right across the street. And so, and so I feel that even though it's not for everybody, it's, I think, very consistent with the long-term plan that we've had for this area.
Ms. Lane, you had a comment?
Well, a few. So, since I have been with this project since the very first, to an extent, on one board or another, you know, the master plan was to do the commercial, then the high-density, then the R18. And I know we all know, and things change, but the amenities were there for it, the water features, the walkability, things like that that made it so appealing. I'm a little bit concerned when you said that staff is trying to get this built out as quickly as possible. That concerns me because I'd rather it to be built with whatever time it takes for the market to sway the property that way, and the planning that we had initially to let it go through. So I was a little concerned by that comment as well.
Maybe I can clarify Mr. Cannon's comment there. We've had a number of discussions with SLR and the representatives for all of those entities over the last couple of months as concerns the whole park, including the commercial, residential, Highbury, Lake Park, and all that. And basically, the first concern and premise, our first concern and the premise we took to him was, you've got a commercial park now that's basically 15 years old, and you've got about half of that space in the office park that is still unoccupied. We'd like to see a plan which is generated and how you guys are going to address that for a lot of obvious reasons, including the slowing momentum of any development that happens over time. So that's where the origination of that conversation comes from. A second part of that conversation that he may or may not have been alluding to, which I think is actually important to the conversation, is that he said, "We also would like to see a further definition of, from a comprehensive standpoint, what you guys are committing to and would like to do here in particularly the residential portion," because that has always been a longer-term concern of the council and the planning commission in terms of that final piece in the single-family residential area, which is where you do the, whatever you call it, the estate-type homes or the larger than 8,000 square foot lots. And if you would commit to that from an overall concept standpoint, the council and the planning commission would probably have an easier time, or at least from a consideration standpoint, they might be more amenable to your proposals for the higher-density portions of the project. So that's what we were referring to in terms of why we would like to see and how we would like to see the overall project built out.
Well, and I think I would have been more comfortable if we had 12,000 square foot lots, the 10,000s build out as we promised in the first, instead of all this piecemealing the high-density.
That's basically what we told them.
Yeah. And that's why I'm not comfortable with this all. I've watched it be piecemealed and what the original plan was going to be taken apart.
Right. As I've talked with developers also, I understand why they're piecemealing it, because that's what they can get funded. And, you know, sometimes you have to use other people's funds to do this building, and if other people don't want to fund single-family development, it doesn't get funded. And they are, those funders are, right now, looking at more of the multifamily, and that's why they're piecemealing it, but they're trying to keep it so that we can make it a total mixed-use community.
But are we selling out our standards and not waiting for the single-family, and is that going to affect our image down the road? So are we cutting off our nose to spider face?
I look at it as, I'm less hung up on the density and more hung up on the quality. And if I can be convinced, and I have been in this case, that the quality of development is there, and the architectural standards are there, and all the things that we have in our process and in this development agreement to have a high-quality project, I don't think that's something we regret. If you look at a lot of the duplexes or townhomes built in this city pre-incorporation in the 60s and 70s that we all kind of say, gee, that was, you know, the county didn't do us any favors there, those were a whole different development standard than the townhomes and multifamily homes that we've seen in the recent years because of our high standards. And so I would say that these projects that we have approved and are looking to approve that meet those high standards are things that we'll be proud of years and decades from now because they meet those high standards.
I have a comment. Mr. Rasmussen, I'm just letting you know that we would love to do business with you, we're just trying to do our best here for the people in our city. That's one concern I have about the C2, I think that I got resolved, I think I heard from Councilman Ray Stevenson mention about you already have someone lined up to fill those tenants in that area, C2. I'm concerned about, we don't go too fast or too slow, to be honest with you, I think if you have someone to line up to buy your products, and I think you can, you know, be main and supply, basically. That's one thing about C2, and I think I'm okay with that, with the, you says, someone or people will rent it out or will fill up the C2 area, I think it'll be okay and I will go for it, I think. That's my opinion.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council on ordinance 12-19?
I was just going to say that I really appreciate the time discussion that we have on it, because I think that's all of our frustrations, is that some things are being built too fast and some things are being built too slow. But when it comes to a general change in zoning, it's whether it's being built tomorrow or in five years, as long as it meets the master plan. I mean, if you don't agree with it because of the zoning, I think that's one reason to vote against with it. But if it's just that the timing's going too fast or going too slow, that, you know, really it's our purview is in the planning of it. And so as much as I like to have the time and discussion on how we want to space everything out and get all cylinders firing at once, that you should vote your zoning on this, I guess. With the fairness, we call a question on that.
Okay, with the questions being called, let's do a roll call vote on this one tonight.
Is it a roll call for supporting?
Yeah, this is a roll call in favor of 1219, because we've had a motion and a second a while back, so we're, so a roll call vote, this is disapproved.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it. We can now move on to Resolution 12-72. And Mr. Pyle, do you want to talk specifically what this piece of it does?
Mayor, I think all I really need to make comment to is 72, the difference between 72 and 73, as I mentioned earlier, they're both development agreements. 72 deals specifically with the requirements as they had to do with the single-family project. 73 has to do specifically with the requirements to the multifamily type development.
Thank you. Any motions on 1272 or questions?
I guess, Mr. Pyle, I wasn't really prepared to come and talk about this R18 and the PUD prospects for it, but I think as it's been talked about, some of the things from the council, that I think moving forward, that that's a discussion that I would like to have, because I think with it being right there on the lake and in a prime spot, maybe the PUD thing is a better option than just leaving it at the R18. And so I'm wondering, you know, what would be the way for, if that's what the rest of the council thinks, if that would be, what would be the way to change this or amend this to get that ball rolling, as opposed to potentially leaving it in R18 limbo?
Well, sir, I guess the easiest way to do that, if that was the council's desire, would be simply to strike the R18, or I'm sorry, not the R18 requirement or the designation, but the minimum lot size requirement, the 8,000 square feet.
And if that's done, that doesn't mean we have to go with any future PUD, that just makes that PUD an option, is that correct, Mr. Pyle?
That's correct. As I mentioned earlier, under the ordinance, you wouldn't have been precluded from bringing a PUD application anyway. The concern is, if you've got 8,000 square foot lot requirement, then how would you make that work?
Right, because it binds your hands a bit on moving pieces around.
I would kind of agree with, I agree with Councilman Rushkin. I think for this piece of development, the PUD would allow some flexibility for open space and other items that typical R18 subdivision would not have. The PUD allows for at least some flexibility to do some open space and other items that would be really nice along the lake. And so I would like that, if there's a way to have that included here, or whether we should just wait and do this at another time, I don't know what's...
We don't recommend adding, you know, that the council would like to consider a PUD designation in the future into the development agreement. We're not recommending that, staff hasn't had a chance to consider what the implication of that would be. We're simply saying if you want to allow that and make it in some sort of a workable situation, then just strike the 8,000 square foot minimum requirement. But I'm not saying I recommend that either, by the way, just so you know, just because I want to make clear to the council that if you do do that, yes, you could always still require even under some sort of a PUD application, but that by number of lots or whatever, that you still only head out the 8,000 square foot lots. The difficulty you're going to have is they're going to likely come back and see economically you can't make that pencil from a development standpoint, so then you're faced right back with the question again of going under the 8,000 square foot lot, which we're here to support whichever way you guys want to go, I just want to make sure you're clear on how that'll work.
If we struck that 8,000 from the development agreement tonight, it would not, because it's still in an R18 zone that basically has 8,000 unless they come back with a different agreement, right?
The way that they would likely approach that is through a PUD designation, but if I understood your question correctly, yes, the zoning would stay the same, but that does not ensure that you'd have 8,000 square foot lots.
How could, just curious, how could they get smaller than 8,000 square feet lots without a PUD if that were struck?
I don't know if there's another way to do that, Steve?
The ordinance allows in the R18 a PUD, the density would roughly be six and a half units an acre. So as the city manager mentioned, the density does increase under the R18 zone. So if it's zoned R18, they still can do a PUD, the density may not be as high as they would like to go. The other thing that could also be an option is that they could come back and amend the development agreement at some point in the future, once they have a master plan of that area.
So we pass it like it is, I mean, if they can't make that work, they'd come back and ask us to change it anyway. I thought it would take a little bit longer before we got into the whittling down process than immediately after we give them the apartments that now we're talking about, well, let's make the next section a PUD. But this doesn't certainly foreclose them, right? Then they'll always come back and ask us to change something if they don't feel they can make it work.
Certainly, they always could, yes. What I would not, you know, recommend, I mean, clearly now you've considered this twice before you as a council, wouldn't want to give them any, make signals from an indication standpoint that you might do something that would consume more time, more resources, more effort from the development process, both at the developer level as well as respect. effort from the development process, both at the developer level as well as respecting, you know, the city's process. And then that effort doesn't change either, which I'm not saying that's what would happen. I'm just warning against that.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question about the 8,000-square-feet right here. Is that any correlation for the home, how big for the home? You know, how many thousand, how many thousand? Is 8,000 square feet for the, the lot, but the home, how big for the home?
Oh, okay. I think I understand the question. And basically, the answer to that is almost more set on the, the frontages and the setbacks as opposed to the square footage. Most of the homes that Ivory, for example, has in their catalog would fit on an 8,000-square-foot lot, depending on the dimensions of the lot, not necessarily the square footage.
But don't we have a minimum? How size per lot, like R-18s have a minimum?
Yes, we do, also within the ordinance. That's right. Is that what the question is, what that is?
I don't want to know because sometimes it'd be large, small home, and that doesn't work good. You know what I'm saying?
Right. I think the, the answer to your question, and I'm not going to be exact here, but for a two-story home, it's something like 1,500 square feet. Yeah, actually Karen probably remembers the number better than I do.
Probably knows it was 1,600 square feet.
Okay. And for a Rambler, it's 1350.
1350 for a Rambler.
All right. Now, having said that, you probably would have a truer feel for what exactly would go in there under the current designation, Councilman Hood, just by looking at the neighborhood that's directly to the east. Those are all, that's an R-18 zone. Those are all Ivory homes in the catalog there. You'd get a feel for, you know, what kind of homes actually sit on those lots.
Okay, any other questions on Resolution 1272 or a motion?
I will move for approval of 1272 as written.
1272 is the one with Castlewood.
That's one we're arguing about.
Both of them, both Castlewood.
No, the other one's with SLR.
Right.
1272 is for the apartments.
No, it's for the 8,000-square-foot lots.
Mr. Pyle, clarification, please?
Mine says it's for the apartments.
All right, I'm, I'm double-checking here just because Councilman Christiansen brought that up earlier. The issue paper says Castlewood and development agreement with SLR for the purposes of the single-family homes, consideration on, and the 8,000-square-foot area. If you look at the resolution, it says SLR owns a real property, developer is voluntarily represented. Okay? Then you go on, look at the development agreement, page three, or page three of your packet, page one, effective property is in Exhibit A, it's a R-18 zone, all single-family home par, homes, and then it says apartments, which I'm guessing is a typo. All single-family homes shall be located in the R-18 zone, currency, single-family residential minimal lot size, 8,000 square feet.
We're reading two different things then because...
Yeah, you may, maybe yours is...
My issue paper that came out on the website says a resolution authorizing the city with Castlewood Development Incorporated. This is 1272, to establish minimum standards for an apartment development.
Nope, that's not what mine says.
1272, that's the one that's posted.
Yeah.
Hey, Dawn, she wants to paper scissors Rockwood yet. Paper wins.
Paper wins over paperless.
The hard copy has 1272.
Yes.
And ultimately, when I sign whatever, it'll be the hard copy I'm signing, so I'll go with the hard copy.
I second the motion to approve Resolution 12-72.
As is, right?
As is on this paper in my hand.
All right. Okay, any discussions, further discussion of that topic, that motion?
I think based off of the discussion we've had, that it seems like it's appropriate to just move forward with this, and then when the PUD discussions come up to...
Or if it never comes up, preferably.
Do that.
Okay. All in favor of approving 1272, say aye.
Aye.
Any to oppose? Okay, that one passes. 1273, again, this is the one with Castlewood.
Resolution as is stamped, just so, I don't, I'm trying not to belate the point.
1272 passed as is.
Right. 1273 is my copy as I show it. Resolution number says Castlewood Development owns real property and the developer, well, I'm sorry, for the purpose of building and doing apartment development is voluntary represented. I don't know if Councilman Christiansen on the online version shows that one as 73 or 72.
By the way, in defense of Councilman Christiansen, the agenda has 1272 with Castlewood and 1273 with SLR.
Yeah.
So the agenda agrees with Councilman Christiansen. Now, if they both pass as is, it's a moot point.
At this point, yeah, frankly, all I'm trying, all I'm doing here is making sure that we're all on the same page as to what we're exactly considering right now, and that we can sort out what the signature is later on, as the mayor mentioned.
Would anyone like to make a motion to this mess?
I would move that we approve Resolution 1273 as printed.
That's, that's good.
All right, we have a second.
Good qualifier.
This, second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving 1273 as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any who oppose?
Aye.
Okay, the record show it's six to one. Was there just one aye? All right. All right, any need for executive session today, Mr. Stevens?
No, sir.
All right, then we come to item 11, which is to adjourn.